I'm gonna go ahead and call this meeting in order. HEPCAP 286, will you please put it in the pledge?
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just give her a hand. Thank you very much, fellas, appreciate it. Enjoy your tour of the police station. But don't work it too much, we don't want you to have to go back.
Oh, we don't wanna sit.
Alright.
How's it working?
Roll call.
Yeah, well, it's all working, we're working.
Here.
Here. Here.
Here.
Here. Alright, we have quorum. First item is the consent agenda of the Finance Committee report of Alderman Bellington.
My name is Committee Dean Pete this afternoon. We discussed several topics, we reviewed a few texts, but mostly we spent just some time talking about things that we might want a new finance director to focus on, once we have someone here. And that's where most of our, most of our time was spent, that we would recommend approval of the consent agenda.
Any questions?
Did you make the motion?
I just recommend. Oh, I'm sorry, you wanna make your motion?
I'll take the motion that we approve the consent agenda.
I'll second that.
Alright, we have motion in a second, no questions, all in favor? Motion carries by two. Next, public comments. Alright, seen none. Moving to mayor reports. First off, I want to thank Alderman Bellington for filling in last week in my absence, appreciate it. Also wanted to send my condolences to the family of Larry Bernetti, who was an alderman in the late nineties, I believe. Mr. Bernetti passed away here recently. Wanted to thank Chamber of Commerce and Downtown Odessa Incorporated for the Halloween events that they hosted on two separate weekends, I think both of them were pretty successful. The trick or treat downtown was really successful, actually with all the rain and everything, the costume contest, there's a lot of, a lot of people down there still, so appreciate that. Wanted to, uh, where am I at here? Remind you that Chamber of Commerce is also having their Sweet and Savory event this Saturday at Berry Acres, November fourteenth at six PM. You can still buy tickets, they're fifteen dollars a piece, I'll leave them to land at the door. This week I had the, or since the last meeting that I was at, I had the opportunity to visit with the third graders over at the upper elementary, they're going through their local government, their government lesson, and talk to them about the local government, they also toured Jefferson City, met all the classes, we had a really good time, they asked a lot of good questions. And then this past week, this past Friday, I went and visited Ms. Edwards' first grade class, and they greeted me with a nice big banner that welcomed me back to first grade. They asked some questions, read a book, and then we played Pie in the Face, which was a lot of fun. They had a good time, and so I went down to the senior center, and Alderman Henning opened up the senior center for me so that we could, I could talk to them about the taxes, or how we're doing the building collecting taxes this year. That was a good, a good meeting, they had some good questions that I think we got answered. I sent Alderman Henning some of those answers, so he can get them back to him, so thank you for that. And then I also spoke at the town event rally, that was held Thursday before the district championship game. We had a good time at that, the football team won, they play Friday at seven PM versus Maryville, Odessa. And wanting to congratulate the cheerleaders who placed fourth in the state. So congratulations to them. And then it's not, I didn't, I missed it on our schedule here, but just a reminder, Veterans Day is Wednesday, city hall will be closed. So I also wanted to say thank you to all of our veterans who've served. And I believe, oh, one other thing. We're also wanting to change our meeting date for the, this next meeting, from the twenty-third to the thirtieth. We want to move it back a week. It's the twenty-third, it's the night of the lighting ceremony, and as I understand it, they're kinda doing things a little different this year with the holiday. So we'll need a motion if that's our opinion is.
I'll make the motion that we move our November twenty-third meeting to November thirtieth.
Okay. Alderman Wright, second. Motion to move our November twenty-third regular session meeting to November thirtieth. Any discussion on that? It'll still be at the same time, seven PM, right here. All in favor? Motion carries by zero. Alright, thank you, and that's all I have, Alderman reports, Alderman Henning.
The only thing I have to say is, Mr. Mayor, we appreciate you coming down and answering questions, and kind of bringing the light, what other people may have been questioning about how the taxes are gonna be done. I think you put some, some folks behind it, so thank you very much for doing that, that's all I have.
Alderman?
Nothing tonight, Mr. Mayor.
Alderman Carmody?
Nothing, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Stevens?
Nothing tonight, Mr. Mayor.
Alderman Wright?
Nothing, Mr. Mayor.
Alright, thank you. Next is department managers and staff reports, we have EMS, public works, and code enforcement. Any questions on those?
I noticed on the, on the, Mr. Conway's report, it talked about Prairie Fire looking over the nineteen twelve building again. Is there any information that they've provided to us, or they, is there a, I know we, last year we, we attended a plea meeting is what I, what I would have called it, I don't know whether it was something like that going to happen again this year?
They, they haven't contacted me about it, and I haven't seen anything about it, and by this time last year, that hearing would have been completed already.
Right, we did, and it was during World Series time last year.
Yeah, game seven.
I've not been contacted yet.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
When is their contract up?
This is, this is the last time they can fly.
Well, I mean, when is, I mean, they had a contingency contract with us on the building. So when is that contract up?
When they, uh...
I think it's last, either January fifteenth or the last of January.
Okay, yeah.
I was gonna say, what I, what I remember was it would be whenever the awards for this cycle are presented.
Yeah, and usually that was at the end of December.
It's imminent.
Any other questions? Alright, seen none, mayor. We have no old business, new business is bill number two thousand fifteen dash seventeen, first reading ordinance of the city of Odessa, Missouri authorizing the mayor to sign a revised Missouri Public Utility Alliance Mutual Aid Agreement, this is the first reading for your approval.
Make a motion that we approve bill number two thousand fifteen dash eighteen, ordinance number twenty-nine-ten, first reading.
I'll second that. I have wrong, my gin here, I apologize, I'm just... Okay, have a motion in a second, is there any discussion on that? We were checking into conflicts on this, is that correct? That's what this is for, to take away all the other mutual aid agreements that we had. The reason why this is changed is the, as cities are added to the MPUA, the agreement needs to change, so the area, the areas change. So there's more cities added, more mutual aid agreements, the reading of this tonight, this passes, then it nullifies all the other mutual aid agreements that we have for public works. Because I understand that section three was not in the last ordinance, where it says all ordinance, it's a part of the ordinance, says in conflict here with, or hereby repealed? I think that's... The, one other change that I point out is where it lists the, under the program agreements, where it lists the city of Odessa Public Works and the names of the employees, that is different than the last one. We changed the employees around because, like it says, for emergency assistance from our utility, contact following employees in order listed, we wanted them to contact the top public works person, as opposed to someone from a specific department, one employee. So I wanted to point that out. Any other questions? Alright, seen none, all in favor? Motion carries by zero. Next, second reading of bill number two thousand fifteen dash eighteen, ordinance of the city of Odessa, Missouri, authorizing the mayor to sign a revised mutual aid agreement with Missouri Public Utility Alliance.
I'll make the motion that we approve bill number two thousand fifteen dash eighteen, ordinance number twenty-nine-ten.
I'll second, have a motion in a second, any discussion? Roll call.
Alderman Wright?
Yes.
Alderman Henning?
Yes.
Alderman Carmody?
Yes.
Alderman Stevens?
Yes.
Alderman Bellington?
Yes.
Next is a motion, we have an Eagle Scout project. Jacob, if you wanna come up to the podium here, I passed out some information about this project. If you wanna take the microphone, you'd like to turn it on.
It is on.
Okay, is it on already, alright, and then why don't you go ahead and kinda tell us what you want to do here?
I wanna do the pavilion at the Odessa reservoir. Or, yeah, reservoir for the Eagle Scout project. And so we'll redo the wood and paint it. And...
Okay, and you're talking about pavilion at the reservoir, right by the pump house? And you're wanting to, like I said, redo the wood, paint it, and then clear out some lossiness and things like that? And do some like footwork too, I think is what we talked about? Okay. I don't know who, how many people got it, but that's what he has to submit for it, so basically, I, he's coming here for permission to do the work, and then if it's approved by you guys, then I'll sign the paperwork, and you can get started, so do you have any questions?
Only thing I had, it's a small thing, but the trash cans, I thought there was a deal with the trash cans, that we really didn't want to put them out there, 'cause we, 'cause of the impound and people abusing them, stuff like that. I believe we discussed that, with the conservation, and that was the only thing that I was...
And I have the same, the same, same question.
Did you hear that, about the trash, okay. The other, the other thing that I had, and I talked to Lindsay about from Parks, is the barbecue grill. You kinda mentioned possibly putting in a couple, a barbecue grill or two. We think we're gonna hold off on that, which is kinda saving you some money, I think? Because those are, we take them out at Gator Park here, because they're not really being used that much. But I, I think everything else looks, looks pretty good. Are there any other questions for him, if not, then we'll take a motion to approve it.
Also, I make a motion to approve the rehabbing of the, of the pavilion out at the Lake, at the Eagle Scout project, with stipulations.
I'll second.
Have a motion in a second to approve the Eagle Scout project, rehabbing the pavilion, with stipulations. Noted? Any discussion? Anything else you need to add? Alright, all in favor? Motion carries. When do you think you'll be able to start? When do you plan on getting started?
I don't know, because I have to paint it, and I can't do that in the cold stuff.
Alright, keep us up to date, good luck, thanks, we appreciate it. Can I get you a copy of the project? Alright. Next is a discussion on the variable frequency drives. Mr. Stetson? Can you just go ahead and go?
If I use my normal voice, can you guys hear me good without holding up the microphone? Depends on whether it picks up.
Yeah, it's more so...
Need to hold it close.
Okay. City councilor, Mr. Mayor, thank you so much for allowing me to come visit with you all tonight. Tom Steckman from Utility Service, I live in Liberty. As you all probably know, we already maintained your water tank under an asset management maintenance program, and we very much appreciate that. We've been working with your public works department, per their request, to have some variable frequency drives on the pumps and motors, to make, taking the tank out of service a whole lot easier. We've also talked to Paul about doing a possible well maintenance program on the wells. But on the variable frequency drives, you know, there's been some discussion beforehand. We provided a proposal or a recommendation just for you all to, to buy them. And then we looked at, like, a rental program, and upon further review with Mickey and Paul, it's like, eh, that doesn't make a lot of sense. What we came up with is actually doing a maintenance program on the VFD drives. Simply, what we mean is, we're going to, with your all's permission or approval, we would purchase the variable frequency drives, install them, and then maintain them for a set amount every year. So it would be our risk, our responsibility to maintain them and, and keep them up. So if they ever burn out, have a problem with them, it's our dime, so... And in front of you all, it's, it's a, it's not a proposal, nothing to sign tonight, it's just an information. So it's an annual fee, you can get out of anytime you want, there is a payoff schedule in the very back. So this, doing this program, doing a maintenance program on this, would eliminate the responsibility of City of Odessa to have to maintain these things, should they go out. It puts all the risk and responsibility on our back. Paul, did that explain well enough?
Well, what's first, what's the first year gonna cost us?
First year is five thousand three forty-nine, years one through ten. And then year eleven drops down to twenty-two hundred bucks.
So, Exhibit B, if we were to opt out after the first year, we would have to pay forty-nine thousand one hundred seventy-three dollars.
That's correct, correct.
So, in year five, we wanted to opt out, opt out...
Thirty-seven point four one.
Thirty-seven thousand four hundred and forty-one.
Correct.
But to get it started, it's gonna cost one.
Five, that's five thousand bucks. And that fifty-three hundred dollars would not be due until after we get done buying them, installing them, making sure they're in operation, and then you'd get an invoice for it, so it's...
And so each year, we would pay one?
Fifty-three forty-nine, right. Until year eleven goes down to the two thousand something. Twenty-two hundred bucks.
Is that fifty? Say five thousand dollars, is that per VFD or for all three of them?
No, thank you, Paul, that's, that's for all three. That's for all three, so, you know, I don't... Pretty good way to get it done, and have somebody else take the risk and responsibility, in my opinion.
So per Exhibit A, you're showing year one, three, five, seven, and nine, what's actually happening in two, four, six, and eight?
The VFDs are in operation. We come in every other year and do a washout inspection on the water tank, in, in compliance with Missouri DNR regs. So that's when we come in and do the washout inspection of the tank, that they're gonna check the complete VFDs and inspect them, every other year. The odd years, we don't even inspect them, they're up and running. If anything happened to them, a simple phone call, and we're responsible to replace them, fix them, replace them, whatever needs to be done. Good question.
And two of these VFDs would be used every day. One of them, if you're too high service, the two that's on the seventy-five horse motors, one would run today, tomorrow the other one would run. The one that's on the smaller motor, which is at the five hundred thousand gallon storage tank, it will run every day.
And Paul, using VFD drives, and I'm not a complete expert on VFD drives, I'm the tank guy, but correctly if I'm wrong, there would be efficiencies in saving your pumps and motors from wear and tear. There should be energy savings, 'cause they're ramping up, instead of just the hard stops and unlock. So the city's also gonna get a lot of benefits out of using this type of technology.
And the big, one of the big things that VFDs do different from soft starts, is they stay online all the time. Now, if, if there's just a, a small change in your electrical service, the VFDs will kill the, kill the pump, and won't let it, won't let it start until everything gets readjusted. So it, it stays online, it happens all the time, at the end of the line, at the wells, on the VFDs out there. The electrical current will change, and the VFD will drop out the motor to protect the motor. Soft starts don't do that.
So is fifty-three forty-nine, that's everything included, right, labor, everything?
Absolutely.
Well, the only reason I ask is because these rates do not include cost for prevailing wage. I see that in that paragraph.
They do include cost for prevailing wages.
Oh, do, I'm sorry.
Yeah, yeah, okay, yeah. Anything to do with public work money is anyway.
So at the end of ten years?
Drops down to twenty-two hundred dollars.
I'm sorry.
Drops down to twenty-two hundred dollars.
And it just stays that as long as you stay with you, or you stay with us, right?
Yeah, there is, there is a, a clause in inflation adjustment, it can't increase over five percent, so...
Per year or...?
Per year, right, right. But with that, just imagine, ten years from now, we're probably gonna replace the VFD drives with, with new ones, at our expense and not yours. That's how it works.
So, Paul, this is a question of you, so this basically takes the place of what you had presented previously from HOA Solutions?
You still have that, that, okay. The first one on, on HOA is for the purchase straight out of three VFDs. The second one on, on this, the, is the price of the installation, so those two added together, which is totaled on the, on the first page. The last page of HOA, that is rental.
Is the rental.
We would rent, we would rent those VFDs from HOA each time we need it for the washouts.
But what is being presented here...
Is totally different.
Is, it basically takes the place of that.
Yes, correct.
So for the five thousand and change each year for the first ten, we were looking at spending thirty, almost thirty-four thousand. And it was hour dime if something broke, and they were estimated to go twelve to fifteen years. You're saying you're probably gonna replace them in ten, so I'm guessing that's, you've got a little more history with them. I understand, I, yeah, I, I don't see how we wouldn't be money ahead to, to do a service contract, basically, and it's somebody else's responsibility to take care of. I, I think it's a, a much better solution.
I would agree.
I have a question. So let's say the VFD goes out in year seven, and you guys have to replace that, that, that money doesn't change in that five thousand dollars, unless it's the five percent for...
Annual inflation.
Annual inflation, correct?
You are correct. Does it cost you a dime more? And by the way, all these VFDs, HOA is our partner, that's where they're coming from, so it's, you're in good hands. Good, great, good question.
The thing that we would have to work out is, and, and utility service, I'm sure, would be, would be good at showing up to make the repairs, but on my side, when we're down, we're down. If it's in my control, I can get it repaired quickly. We just have to work out the logistics, or would have to, because I want him to worry as much about our system as I do.
And that would, and that would typically be involved in the con, the contract that we would look at, would be the terms, the term, term of service, what the, you know, what the expected response rate is.
Absolutely.
Response time, absolutely, and that's, that's something you cover in the con, in the contract as you create it. You know, whatever you need to communicate to him, what, what, what you desire, and then he's gonna communicate back to you what they can offer, and then, you know, meet somewhere in the middle, or maybe they can give us exactly what, exactly what you expect. And so it's just like you had control.
Does utility service company have a similar contract with anybody, any other cities around the area to do this sort of proposal here? I'm sure this isn't your first time doing this, so...
Okay, great question. The tank maintenance contract you guys are on, like, everybody around here is on the same program, on our maintenance program. We did this for the very first time for the city of Odessa. Now, we put in mixers and tanks, and I went to the companies, like, doing VFDs is no different than putting in a piece of equipment inside the tank, on the well side, we take care of well, pumps and motors, it's no different. So the vice president agreed with me, went back to our well guy, goes, of course we can do that, you'd be number one. And we would make sure it went very, very well. We don't wanna ruin our reputation.
And Mickey had a lot to say in getting things like this started, too.
Any other questions? If I have anything else I can do? No? Alright, thank you, thank you all very much. Next is the city administrator's report, so, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, my report concludes this week. I attended the annual meeting at the loggers, the retirement system in St. Louis. The final cleanup is underway for the Second Street project, we don't have a completion date, but obviously we'll do a final walkthrough with our engineers and punch list. MoDOT, the final construction meeting with MoDOT is tomorrow afternoon at one o'clock. The light poles have been installed, we're still working on making them operational, and that should take place within the next few days. The spillway project is on schedule and is to be completed this week, so barring any weather problems or issues, it should be done this week. We did meet with Larkin and CAT excavation concerning the West Side Interceptor project and the boring under I-70. The, the boring company, the subcontractor hit rock, there was a few issues, but they've got that worked out, and so they're moving forward with that project. Also been meeting with Joey McGlynney, Freddie Wells, Larkin's staff, and city staff concerning funding strategy for the Southeast Treatment Plant, Phase One, this is the filters and the peak flow, and we should have that strategy in place, and, um, ready to present...